Welcome, everyone, to the February 11th Meeting of the Planning Commission. Beautiful February here. It's gonna be a little colder coming up. Jackie, could you please take the roll call?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Shear.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
So, the first thing tonight on the approval of the meeting agenda, are there any comments or additions, subtractions to the meeting agenda? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Nay, anybody? Motion carries. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the meeting minutes for the January 28th meeting. Are there any additions, deletions to those meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is community comment. This is where members of the community can come up, get three minutes to speak about an issue happening. Just ask that it isn't something that's on here later that they could speak about, so it'd open up for any, anyone that wants to come forward and speak. Again, you have three minutes. And identify yourself with your name and address.
I think they're both on there. Lori Groats, 5513 Park Place. A new house is-
Welcome back, Ms. Groats.
Thank you. A new house is being built adjacent to us on the north. Prior to the start of the construction, we asked Brianna in planning how the side yard setback was determined. Later, we asked Chris, and she said she would double-check the calculations. This is the house on the south side elevation. After the walls went up, the house just looked too big for the lot. We looked, we showed an architect the south elevation plan that was submitted by the contractor. The house has a gable on a pitched roof. Now, what was submitted to the city was this drawing outlined in red, and you guys are all familiar with determining side yard setback based upon the height of the house. They showed the average proposed grade down here on the bottom red line. They showed this outline here as being the gable of the house, and the line, it's hard to see here, it's easier to see in red. In black, this is the contractor's line that shows the roof midpoint height, and so he says that this is the midpoint of the gable, which is 21.64 feet. Our architect told us that the two windows on the south are lookout windows, and the average grade should be measured from the bottom of the windows, followed on this red line. See this up here? This is the top, this is the gable. The building height on the south side should be 27.59 feet. This is approximately six feet taller and requires an additional three feet in setback. The architect has not had time to figure the side setback for this little section with the triangle on the top. This isn't a gable, but it's set two feet closer to the property line, so that setback needs to be adjusted. We met, we met with Kerry, and he said he'd run this past Chris and Mr. Knutson. After we spoke with Kerry, we met with another architect and later showed the plans to a third and a fourth. We showed him some pictures we had taken during construction, and my husband will show you those later. He immediately noticed that the gable was at the top of the house, but that decorative trim had been added to the house, which gave the appearance of a large gable. The second story is full height, goes across here. It's not a gable. A gable is a structural part of the roof. The architect who drew the house plans knows it's not a gable, and it should have not been used as a gable in the calculation of the height of the side of the house. The roof midpoint height as submitted on the plan is not true. With this shorter submitted height, the contractor is able to build closer to the property line than what code allows. On the south side of the property, when you take into consideration that there are three finished levels, it appears he overbuilt by several hundred square feet. This home will most likely sell for more than $350 per square foot. Several architects have looked at the south elevation of the submitted home, and they all concur. We believe the-
If you could wrap up, please.
Okay, they need a side yard setback. Okay, the north side, they did the same thing. My husband will show the pictures. Three weeks after we met with Kerry, Mr. Knutson responded that he supported staff's calculation, and according to Mr. Knutson, we only had 30 days from the issuance of the permit to challenge. But I disagree. If there appears to be an alleged cheat or deception that's discovered, then I don't think that you should be held to the 30 days. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jordan, you want to put up the first one? Okay. Okay, we'll start. The slide one here shows the Tyvek White South Gable labeled S Gable at 11:00 at the very top of the second floor. Note, the area to the right on the second floor is not a gable. It has full floor walls labeled full floor at 3:00. It is notched, labeled notch, to fit the ornamental or decorative gable trim deception piece you will see on the next slide. You will also note in the far right, the rear of the house, the east is, east gable is freestanding, labeled E Gable. That's at 2:30. It also is above the second floor. The south gable and east gable are both structural and support the roof. The small Tyvek White Triangle labeled Triangle at 9:00 is also ornamental or decorative trim. It is not structural. The area below it with the house ladder leaning is rectangular in shape and was built about five feet too close to our property line. The rest of the south end was built three feet too close to our property line. Next slide, Jordan. This photo was taken of the same area as approximately on the previous slide. It shows the ornamental gable deception trim now installed, labeled deception gable trim at 2:30. If you look carefully, you will see the trim piece does not line up with the east edge of the true gable or the lower end. Look carefully at the very small red circles at 2:00 and 4:00 for these details. Note, the area to the far right east on the second floor is not a gable. It has full floors labeled full floor. Jordan, next slide. Slide three. This was taken of the north side of the house. It shows ornamental gable trim deception pieces labeled deception gable trim with the arrows. If you look carefully, you will see these pieces do not line up with the edges of the true gable or lower ends. Look carefully at the small red circles for the details. Note, the area to the right west on the second floor is not a gable. It has full floors labeled full floor with arrows. Next slide. This photo was taken on the north side again, and the gable is outlined in red. The wall is 26 feet tall to midpoint. Based on the code, the setback should be 15.5. The survey is 12.4. The house is too close to the north lot line. Next slide, item number five. This shows you, early in the construction, nothing was put on. You can see the entire first and second floor are full floor walls, and you'll see a box top immediately above the gable on the ground and the ladder. Next slide, item six. It shows how the trusses line up with the true gable at the top, and you will see the foam, the blue foam through the back of the small triangle up from the ladder. That is purely decorative, it's not structural. It's ornamental, it's a deception piece. And next slide, item seven. Shows the-
Mr. Groats, if you could wrap up pretty quick.
Yep. The trusses through the, you can see them through the second floor, which is full floor, and they line up with the, with the true gable. And the last slide, item number eight. Second floor on the north side is full height, and if you look through it, you can see the trusses that line up above. I did not find this. This was called to my attention by an architect we met with a week ago that's, that's a recognized architect, and he was not happy when he saw it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Crabtree, live at 5408 Oaklawn Avenue, and I'm just gonna sort of make one final comment on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Groats. They asked me to put this slide up here. This is the architect's plan of the south side of the house. Really like to draw your attention to item number eight, which is circled there, and that is described on the main drawing.
Could you point to it on the screen?
Point there, eight. And there is, it's labeling that gable, and it says here, "Profile of the gable end trim." There is also item 11, which points to this little window here, or it's actually a vent. It's described as the gable end sidewall vent. We think it's very clear that just this part here is the gable. There is no detail as to what this is here, and you've seen from the pictures, it's separate construction. I think that finishes up my comments, then, really relates to this. But this begs some, this whole business of how something like this has been approved for construction raises some much bigger issues as to how this is happening on an ongoing basis in this city. Proposals which should not be being given, building permits are being given building permits. And I think that's an issue which you, as a planning commission, need to address. How you choose to do it, I don't know. If I had a general comment to make, and having spent quite a lot of time looking at what the city requirements are and what the building code requirements are, if everything were being followed, most of the issues which residents in this city are facing today would not occur. So you either sort the process out, or you stop for a while. Would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would take a motion to close the community comment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thanks. Just coming back for a second, Kerry, on this, on this items, I'm assuming this isn't the first time you've run across this, right? Do you have any comments from the staff level? And I just, I'm just primarily curious on, I believe the elevation of the home actually is from the front, correct? The front elevation, so-
You were looking at the side elevation.
That was a side elevation, right? So I, as I understand it now, our, I don't believe the side lower windows would, would count towards that elevation, right? For the full height of the house? As it's written today, or is there some vagueness in it?
Well, they haven't finished the side grading along there, so they haven't set, that side yard is measured from proposed grade. Remember, we're at the front. You measure from the existing grade. So where the setback is taken from is the proposed grade along the side, and that hasn't been established in those pictures that you saw. That's to be a window well there on the side, and they just haven't brought the dirt in along the side as well.
To be around it?
Right.
Okay. Do you have any comments to the, these comments?
Staff reviewed those plans and felt that they met code. We had the building official look at it again. They believe that it continues to meet code. The city attorney also, as the Groats mentioned, reviewed the plans as well, and they believe it meets code as well. Roger Knutson, city attorney, believes it meets code as well.
Commissioner Shear.
This is sort of a delicate comment that I'd like to make. I guess I only have a few more meetings to make comments, so I'll go ahead. One of the things that's been interesting to me every time, I've lived through, I guess, two or three pretty comprehensive changes of code in the nine years I've served on the planning commission. And one of the things that is interesting to me is how quickly and cleverly builders find a way to put on a lot what they want to put on a lot. I stopped short of saying it's a game, but it's clever, I guess I would say. And, you know, we saw houses that builders bermed up in order to get a different view from the street. I could, I could go on with many of the things that have occurred. And it does strike me, as I listen to the Groats' presentation, that we could have some of the same kinds of things going on here. If these aren't, I'm not an architect. If these are not true gables, that, if this is a game that's being played to get a different measurement, that's of concern. I was particularly interested in the small piece that juts forward that clearly is a false back, and, and I'm interested in how that meets code with regard to the setback requirement. It's, it's an interesting architectural piece on the home, and it certainly makes it more attractive than a big flat wall. But, but if that is an issue in terms of the setback, I'd have a problem with that.
Yeah, that made setback because it, it doesn't exceed the 15 feet in height. That's when you need to start stepping the structure back in.
So it's how we're calculating whether it exceeds the 15?
It, 10 feet is the required setback. This is quite a wide lot. This is a lot that's over 75 feet in width. So 10-foot setback is required for that piece that's under 15 feet tall, and that's that part that sticks out.
Okay.
And then it sets back after that, correct?
My comment would be, I, it wouldn't be beyond belief that we have builders that have found some new ways to gain some height on a house.
And part of, part of this is they've added a lot of architectural elements along the side. It kind of feeds into the sidewall articulation provision in the code to break up the mass of that, of that large wall.
I'll just say, I mean, one of the things we're obviously trying not to do as we've changed these things is, what are the unintended consequences? I think that's, Commissioner Shear was getting at a little bit. So if I, if I may, Kerry, if you could bring that back in, maybe the next meeting or two, maybe it's under a staff comment or something, just to show us how that particular home meets the code, and if there's any areas that may be open for interpretation, how was that interpreted? And if there's anything that needs to change in our code to, to address those.
Certainly, we can do that, and we could, we could bring in the building official as well to define some of those terms that were-
Yeah, you know, if there's, like I said, on the, the front grade elevation, if there's any gray areas on that, for example, I know that's come up before, and just make sure we're, we're measuring from the same, same spot, so it's an even playing field for that, not what someone's clevering the system, for lack of a better term.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Next up tonight are public hearings. There's one scheduled for tonight, variance for Premier Properties at 4,000 Hazleton Road. Kerry, if you could bring that up?
Okay, thank you, Chair. Members of the commission. Our one public hearing this evening is for a property located in the greater Southdale area, just west of France Avenue on Hazleton Road. It's located just north of the Sunrise Assisted Living Complex. To the south, the Cremation Society is located on the corner of France and Hazleton here. There's a property to the west here. This is a city-owned, it's a real low spot, it's a drainage area during a 100-year storm event, so that, a larger vacant piece of property. The site we're looking at is owned PRD 4. It's our high-density residential district. The site exists today as, with a three-story, 16-unit apartment building, as shown in the screen here. There are two rows of detached garages, a total of 16 stalls associated with the 16 units. And you can note in the picture here, there's a long line of cars parked along the street here. There's no onsite parking on this property. Our city, if this were built today, our city code would require a 1.25 enclosed stalls and 0.75 exposed stalls. So based on our code requirement today, they would need to provide 20 garage stalls or underground parking and 12 surface parking stalls. And again, there's no surface parking today. Here's another, a few more angles of the property. There's a, there's a pool located on the west side of the building. It's in a kind of a poor state of repair. Couple of pictures of the pool during summer conditions. So this is a survey of existing conditions. You can see the triangular-shaped pool on the west side, the building, and then the two rows of the parking garages. So what the applicant would like to do here is add some off-street parking. They would fill in the, that pool that we saw with a parking field on the west side of the building, and then another small parking field just south of the, of the garages. The area that's dashed in red here, that's the required setback. There's a 20-foot required setback to the property line, and then a 10-foot setback to the adjacent property line. So the variances that they're requesting here are front-street setback variances from 20 feet to 1, 2, and 12, and I'll show those locations in a minute, and then on the side from 10 to 5. So this setback right here is one foot from the lot line. It's two feet right here, and this parking field is 12 feet in both locations here. Want to note that there is a large green area from the property line to the edge of the street. So there still would be, despite the parking lot coming out toward the street, there still would be this green space located right here. So in looking at the variance criteria, staff believes that the variance criteria is met here, and that the request is reasonable. Again, there's no surface stalls on the, on the site today. They rely a lot of the residents here on off-street parking. In the wintertime with our parking ban, that becomes really problematic for the, for the residents. There really is no way to locate parking stalls to meet our setback requirements here. There's just not enough room in the site, given the location of the existing structures and the small size of, of the site. In regard to our landscape requirements, based on the perimeter of the, the site here, 21 over-story trees are, are required. There's 29 out there today. 12 would have to be removed. The plans show 24 trees that would remain or be proposed on the site. They are proposing some landscaping around the parking field here and in this location here. They're also proposing some retention areas here, and the applicant can, the engineer is here with us this evening and can speak to these two areas. Our city engineers reviewed the plan and found them acceptable. This is subject to Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, so they would need to go through their approvals. But the thinking here is that this would be an improvement over existing conditions with, with the holding ponds that would filter out sediment before it moves along. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the variances, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your report. That would include the plans being consistent with what's being shown here this evening, that they submit a final landscape plan, subject to review and approval of the city forester, to make sure that's all right, and then consistent with the city engineer's memo and review and approval of the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
Commissioner Shear.
Kerry, as I'm reading through the material, I want to get the numbers straight. So we have a 16-unit building, and they're proposing 20 underground and 12 surface slots total with these additions, for a total of 32 slots or two per unit?
They're propos, the, the 16 garages would remain, and they're proposing a total of 13 surface stalls. So they would be just one stall over our surface stall requirement. They would still be short-parked in terms of covered parking. That would be, continue to be an existing noncompliment.
The total stalls, covered and uncovered, after this would be?
The totals, so, that's, if they have 16 plus 13, 29 stalls total.
For a 16-unit building?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's code was, if you built this day, it'd be 32, 30, yes, 32 units?
That's correct.
Additional, Commissioner Carr.
Could you just show me on the diagram that's up where the setbacks are? I know you mentioned it was a one-foot, two-foot. I was curious where those are in particular.
Yes, so there would be a one-foot setback right here. The dark black line is the property line. So to the, to the parking lot, there would just be a one-foot setback to the property line. There is green space still to the edge of the road, which is out here. The two-foot setback is on the other side of the drive entrance right here, and then the 12-foot setback is right here and right here.
And for those setbacks, particularly the one-foot and the two-foot, is that, is there room there for planting to basically screen that parking lot from the road?
There, yeah, there's probably, this is about 10 feet in here from the curb to the parking lot. So there, there could be some, some landscaping within the boulevard there.
Yeah, I don't, has that been proposed? Is that in the landscaping plan?
They're not proposing anything out there.
And then I had another question about lighting. I can't recall if this is near a residential neighborhood or not, but if they're putting parking lots in, has there been a proposal for lighting?
That would be subject to, if they were to do that, they would submit a lighting plan along with these plans, and they would have to read, meet our, our new ordinance where we've taken down the, the lighting requirement somewhat.
Okay, and then, and one final question that has to do with the landscaping plan. You mentioned over-story trees, and again, I think, you know, obviously that's attractive, but my concern has to do with, again, perhaps seeing parking lots, which we're trying to avoid that parking lot look, if there's any lower shrubs that could be planted as well, and if that's included in the plan or not.
It's not, but that certainly is a condition that the planning commission could add on this. There is senior housing to the south. It's set quite a bit, quite a ways back from the road, but nonetheless, that is housing to the south. So that would be a reasonable request there, asking to come closer to the street to require some, some landscaping along there. Now, that would be within the right-of-way, so we'd want to work with our engineering department, you know, figure out what may survive, you know, what's best to be planted within that area, along with the forester.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kerry? Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
So Kerry, are, is the impervious coverage being increased? I didn't see that in the report.
Yeah, they didn't give us a, a specific calculation on that unless the engineer knows that, but I, there would be a slight increase in impervious surface.
And does that meet our code, or is there?
We only have a, a building coverage requirement.
For the zone?
Right.
And then with what, I think you mentioned that, but does the city allow landscaping within the right-of-way?
We have, we have allowed that in the past, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, if no one else did. So are there any, were there any neighborhood comments that came with this?
We haven't received any neighborhood comment, no.
Okay. You said the Nine Mile Creek, what are they requiring for stormwater here, do you know? Are they requiring that all this be treated before, all this new area, or what, do you know what the requirement is from this?
Yeah, I don't know the detailed requirements, but I believe in their conversations, initial conversations with the Watershed District, that's where these ponding areas are, are being required by the Watershed District.
Okay, maybe the applicant speak to that, but I know Nine Mile has kind of been requiring that on the projects now, right?
They have.
Any additional? Okay. Yeah, my other question was Commissioner Carr on the landscaping, and just in general here on how we can not see these lots from the street as much as possible. Any other questions for Kerry? Commissioner Schroeder.
I just had one. I know the city engineer's report says they have a curb cut permit that's required for the two, for the one additional new curb cut. Do we have a limit to the number of curb cuts that are allowed on the parcel?
Yeah, we don't. We did have some discussion about eliminating this curb cut and connecting it to the, to the existing drive aisle over here. In the end, the city engineer thought this, this would be okay, rather than taking out an additional tree and making that connection.
Great, thank you. The applicant wants to come forth and say anything or give any presentation. We look forward to that.
presentation. We look forward to that.
I'm Andrew Higgins.
Does, does that microphone work? Or maybe want to, do you have anything to show, or maybe it's, if, if not, maybe step to the side podium?
I'll introduce myself. Also, I'm Roger Anderson, the engineer, and Andy in this company owns the property, so he can tell you a little bit about what their goals are, and then I'll fill you in on some of the details on the design, et cetera. Here we go. Can you get that on? Can you hear that?
Just a check, sorry.
There we go. That's coming through. Andy, why don't you go ahead and explain a little bit about the history of the project?
Okay, well, Premier Properties, we, we own and manage quite a large number of apartments in Edina, especially along Park Lawn Avenue. We purchased that building in December of 2013, not really knowing, I didn't know about even a parking ban on the street, and when I learned of the, learned in October of that, I talked with Roger and said, "We've got to do something with this parking lot." We had been talking about what to do with the pool, and I said, "We need to get some parking in there." So we've been meeting with Carrie and, and think we have a really good plan that will get 13 cars off of that street when, you know, we, we have a problem with parking and all the new units being built and things like that that are going in there. I think it's, will be a good, good improvement to the neighborhood. I, I do have some pictures of the neighboring properties, and I don't know how to show you those, but.
You can, you can show them on the, if you put them on, they can do an overhead where the, there's a drawing on there right now?
It's laying right in here.
Yeah, if you can kind of see, line that up and show us what you will.
Okay, well, this, this picture right here is, you can see the fence right there. That's the pool fence, and then this is the driveway to the property that would be directly to the north. And then these are pictures of how close their parking is to the street, right down, you know, on Mayville Drive, which is right up the way here, and Lenmar Drive. And then I thought this is a-
What is that building to the north? What is, is that a house, or what is that?
No, it's a, it's another apartment building.
Okay.
And then this is a picture of the cremation society's parking lot right up against my garage. And then I thought these were interesting pictures, too, because this is the vitamin shop that was just built, and I thought, just to show you how close the parking is to their neighbors, and then this is also 7235 France and how close that is to the street, if, if that means anything to anyone. But anyway.
Maybe I can expand on that a little bit. Again, I'm Roger Anderson. I, I'm a civil engineer, and I've been working with Andy and his group for many years, and it, it was actually an interesting project for us. You can see the configuration of the lot is unlike probably any other. I think I better take a second here and just get a colored picture on there. Excuse me while I fumble a little bit. A picture like this. Let's see, can you get that, or do I have to juggle a little bit?
Maybe, yeah, there you go.
There we go. We must have worked with 12 configurations on this west end. There just wasn't a perfect layout. You know, we've, I've done parking for years, and I had a lot of fun with this, actually. And we came up with this as a compromise to get the best parking we thought we could fit in there. It laid out nice. It comes off the road on the west side here where we can have some visibility on both sides. A lot of times the engineers, or we engineers, are concerned because of visibility, but this is a low-traffic road because there's a diversion or a stop to the north here, if I remember correctly. So we brought the road out where people could come out and see. We also are looking at the landscaping a bit here where, I think this is a little different than what we proposed, but we added some overstory trees here. So the branches will be up off the ground, and then somebody coming out in the car is able to see underneath those and, and check both ways out of the, away from the traffic and make sure it's clear.
Are you saying those will be new trees?
They'll be new trees, yeah. And we, we took the comments to heart in the report and hadn't had a conversation with Carrie about it, but I think we had 29 and 21 as required. Is that what it would be? We're losing 12, and all of them happen to be really these kind of overstory or-
Yeah, the cedar trees that are around the perimeter of the pool that have way overgrown anyway have met their life expectancy. So those were going to come down probably just with a good snow.
But the idea is we, we're saving what we can. There's a good overstory tree, tree here. There's a couple in this area. The stormwater ponds aren't going to be holes in the ground with water in them. They're going to be filled with rock. They're rock sumps. They look like a, a rain garden or a landscape area, not a muckhole, which is kind of the design we're going with lately. That has been run by the watershed, and the plan as proposed meets the watershed requirements. They, they have two requirements. This is a special district for the city because of past flooding problems, I think, and stormwater management that's necessary. But you both have to control the rate and the water quality. So the, these underground ponds or rock sumps manage both of those quite nicely, where we can manage the rate, get the water to the storm sewer. In a hundred-year storm, quite frankly, this will flood for probably an hour and a half. A lot of areas will in a hundred-year flood, and it'll control the water and it'll seep away. The one on the easterly side, that'll look the same. We'll make it a landscape feature, and we feel we can and have met the watershed requirements. They did ask for a soil boring. I think that was done yesterday or today. For two things. They wanted to make sure we could tell what kind of soil was underneath these rock sumps so it would infiltrate properly, and also to check if there was any contamination. A problem we're running into more and more as we put these rock sumps in. They don't want to infiltrate water into something where there might be a pollution problem that could carry it further into the aquifer. So that's soil boring is, will be available here in a couple of days. The way the apartment works is, you know, built in the 60s, I think. Well, back then, you had one-bedroom apartments primarily. You've got couples that have generally one car. We live in a different era now. Well, I could see it was fine back then, but now it's a little bit more difficult to rent. People don't like to park on the street. You can't get people in there. How many two-bedrooms? There's only one?
No, there's 16 two-bedrooms.
16 two-bedrooms, okay. The, it's a garden apartment where the first floor is like a lookout. It's halfway in the ground, sort of like that house that you saw on, on there earlier. So the windows are at grade level for the lower unit. They walk down a half a flight of stairs. We were a little concerned here with lights coming in the end of the window, or end of the building, so we've got more landscape. It doesn't show on this plan, but we'll screen this so people won't have headlights going in. And this is really a one-way drop-off and fairly little-used, I could say, because everybody who goes there generally is going to their parking spot. And there's a really cool fountain out in the front, too, that Andy and his father have decided to keep as a feature that, it's, it's a nice place, and they always do things in a, a good manner, in my experience. So that's a little bit about how we landed here and why this parking is a bit unusual shape but works. We've got sidewalks connecting the rear courtyard. There's a picnic area in the back, and there'll be a sidewalk connecting the front here to this drive. On this side, a dumpster is right at the end of this garage, and that's why we've got a open space there for the dumpster and then three new parking spots. So that's a little bit about how the design evolved. We think it'll work well and get the cars off the street. I, I'm hearing that the landscape is an issue, and we're certainly willing to work with you folks to make sure that works out because, like I said, it's a, a building that this company had been looking at for quite a while. They want to own it. They want to maintain it in grand style, and landscaping is an important part of that puzzle. So we can go through the landscaping, or I did hear you say a couple of things that I'll point out. Let's get back to the overstory trees, and I think we have 12 shown on here. We're, we're taking down 12 of these cedars. We're a bit limited on where to put them back, but the, against the property to the north, there's already pretty heavy wooded areas, as you can see, so we can't really stick anything back there. We, we pretty much have to put them along our front area. So we're, we're proposing some here. On this side, a couple of evergreens to help screen from the, the France Avenue side because it's really only a, I think it's a half a block away. And it will, the existing tree here, we'll add some around the low-height stuff around the rock garden. And I hadn't thought about this area, quite frankly. So if you have some ideas there, I don't want to go with anything too high because there could be a pull-out problem with people, you know, when they're in their car, you want to be able to look up and down the street, but certainly something could go in there. I think that would help screen that area a little bit. So with that, I'll, we're ready for questions, whatever suggestions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Forrest?
Well, I share, Commissioner Schroder's concerned about the curb cut. When I looked at this originally, I was thinking, "That's right on a curve," which bothers me a little bit, so I'm, I'm not sure. I don't, I won't say I object to that entrance necessarily, but I, that was a red flag sort of. Will you be considering similar screening? You said there's, on the west side, that there are already plantings on the adjacent property along that property line. Is, do you perceive possibly any need for, I don't know if it would be a low fence or some type of thing to keep the headlights from the apartment building to the north, considering that?
Are you, are you talking in this area, Commissioner Forrest?
Yeah, mostly headlights, you know, so that the headlights are screened somewhat in case those plantings are gone at some point.
I think Andy showed those photos. I think we had a perspective of that, and it's-
It's higher. The building is much higher than the parking lot.
And it's already a pretty full, where's that photo, Andy?
It's right here.
This is the neighbor's driveway. Make sure I have it on here. And this is the fence around the pool, and these, these tall cedars, pretty effective barrier, actually on the neighbor's property between the pool and the, his drive right in here.
And those are on the neighboring property, then?
They're on the neighbor's property. They're not on our, our property, correct?
So I guess that's one of, one of my concerns, is just increasing the light coming onto their residential property there, so.
Yeah, and you can see it's, it is down, you know, where the pool is down below the building, too, so.
That pool was totally dysfunctional, by the way. It was all concrete lined with fiberglass pieces of junk, quite frankly, so.
It had water in between the fiberglass, and it was like a trampoline. It was an easy decision.
Not user-friendly, huh?
It was an easy decision to decide to, and then it was interesting, too, that no one objected in the whole building when I, I was worried because I didn't know, you, you know, you have leases and things like that with a pool, and we decided in May to close it 2014, and I sent a letter out, and no one said anything. I was surprised. We just said we weren't going to open it, and no one complained. So I don't, I don't know.
Commissioner Schroder.
I have a question about the configuration of the parking lot on the west side. The, the two most easterly stalls on the northerly side, one is 10 feet, one's 11 feet. And, and so there's one question there. The other question is, if I take that last one that's labeled now as 11 feet, how does somebody actually back out of that space?
Well-
Another question.
You're going to have to maneuver into it, but the reason it's wider is exactly that. The, the normal city stall width is nine feet, and as we got to this end and recognizing that it's a tighter maneuver, this one's 10 feet and this one's 11 feet wide. You know, you look at people's cars nowadays and what we're all driving, except me, I'm a pickup truck guy, but so many of them are small cars. They, believe me, they all just have minimal problems maneuvering in that area, quite frankly, with any of the small cars that are out there today. In my opinion, it'll probably be the spot people go to first. But when we, as the plan evolved, we knew there, it wasn't a perfect answer. I couldn't give the perfect fire truck backup, and I couldn't do it. But I, I know this will be a, be usable space for, for the people parking here and the types of cars.
It also adds to when, in the wintertime, especially when they're shoveling, it'll be, it'll give people a little bit of space to be able to walk.
Is that picking up on the microphone?
Oh.
You may have to switch that back and forth.
I'm sorry. It'll, having this a little wider will also give us some space to shovel, and then they can get to the sidewalk, because it's my guess that when people are using this lot, they'll be using the back door, which right now you can't use because, I'll show you this picture here. This is existing, and, you know, here's the pool, and this is all fenced in tightly right now. So there's a doorway right, about right where my finger is right now, that has only been used for the pool.
My concern with that last space and the normal backup space in a parking lot design would be about eight feet, so the car can actually maneuver to get about 90 degrees essentially perpendicular to the parking space and then pull back out. And if they can't do that, they may find themselves backing out of the parking lot and onto Lenmar Drive, which I think is kind of, it, although there's not really a sightline issue for a car that's pulling out onto the street going forward, for a car that's backing out, that would be an issue. And so when I look at this, I think it's an appropriate solution to finding more parking spaces on the site, but I think the configuration of those last two is not doing what it needs to do to facilitate maneuvering the right way. The other bigger area that I want to look at is the, the looping driveway across the front. And I understand there's the rock fountain, and I understand that it might be kind of a signature, but there's no parking on there. It doesn't really function in terms of providing anything related to vehicles on the site. And I'm wondering if you explored actually looking at that as a parking surface by slightly widening it, by creating parking bays, or actually getting rid of it as you add more parking to other portions of the site? Because when you look at the photographs, when we drive by this, you don't see people parking out there. You don't designate it as parking, and it seems like it's just extra hardcover that we really don't need on this site.
Well, part of it is a, I mean, it's a part of the ambiance of the building, you know, this old style from the 60s. It's the way it was built. It also sets off the fountain in the front. We, we looked at, as Carrie said, attaching the driveway over here. It was possible, but it cost you at least a couple more spaces and didn't really achieve the goal. We did look at some parallel parking here, and I think when people have parties, if I remember right, Andy, they pull off on here once in a while on the grass.
Yeah, at, at present, at seven o'clock, after seven o'clock, there is somebody that parks here and here at seven o'clock, and then there's somebody that'll park in the driveway here after seven o'clock. It's just the way we had to set it up. There's three people that can have off-street parking. We wouldn't have that then. The reason is, is that there are some older people in the building that do get picked up, or they drop groceries off, and they, that's what they use the turnaround for.
Yeah, the building isn't handicap accessible because it doesn't have an elevator, and again, every, there's no ground floor apartments. You go in the door and you have to go down a half a floor or up a half, and then another floor to get to the third. So being able to drop people off in the front in this neighborhood is a, a good amenity to have.
I don't disagree with that, but it's a lot of pavement to get somebody to the front door, and we're looking at adding more pavement to accommodate parking that you say you need, but the, the, the amount of pavement, the number of curb cuts that we add on the site, the experience that people have as they- site, the experience that people have as they might be walking along the street, it becomes all about accommodating cars on the site instead of a lot of the things we're trying to do in the France Avenue corridor, about accommodating pedestrians more directly. This isn't a particularly pedestrian-friendly street on that side of the street, but this is a street that receives a lot of pedestrian traffic as the cremation society has its services. It can't accommodate all the parking that happens on their site, so you have a lot of people walking here. Their experience now with this is just that much more focused on the cars.
I was kind of, kind of asked a similar type of question as Commissioner Schroeder is, how did you get to this many stalls that you want to add? And I was also, the same thing with the turnaround there and, you know, if you're using two spots that are already, why is it possible that that remains and you don't add as many? You know, how did you come up with that number of spots? I understand it's, you know, in theory, it's what the ordinance allows, but you've had really none of these today and you came up with 13, so I'd be curious on that. And, you know, Commissioner Schroeder's point, do we need to add all of these when you, it looks like you had at least a couple there that could be reused as today? And I agree with him, there's just, it's, I know you're doing things with storm, but you just have a lot of hardscape here and you're adding a lot more, quite frankly.
Yeah, well, when you look at what was there before, which was the pool, the way the watershed looks at it, by the way, they don't call it hard surface because the water doesn't run off, it goes into the pool and stays there, but it was a hard surface or a structure that was there. We did look at putting parallel parking here, but if you just kind of mentally take one of these spaces and put it on here.
Well, no, I'm more talking about the space that people park today. You said people park there today after seven.
Well, after seven, it's not desirable, but there's nothing else we can do. We have to get people off the street. They don't do that in the summertime. It's just strictly in the winter, because we have no option after midnight.
So, in the summertime, they're in the street?
Summertime, they're on the street, yeah. Summertime, there isn't a problem, to be really honest, because the, you know, you can park on the street, but, but once November 1st hits, midnight to 6:00 AM, you can't.
Well, it's there blocking the, no, I think it's a 20-foot drive going back here, so they block half of it or park half on the roadway or on the grass. Same thing up in here. So, if somebody wants to come through, it's down to one lane.
But how did you decide 13 stalls? Is that, what was that based upon? Is that just what you thought you could fit here or is what, I'm curious on that?
Well, you know, our goal was to try and get as close to the rule as we could and this is the best I could do to get to 13. Could we have, I had some plans that had one less, I had some that had more, but they presented other encroachment issues and maneuvering issues, et cetera. So, this, on balance, after looking at probably 10 renditions, seemed like a reasonable plan to shoot for, to do the best we could for the site and get some parking out here.
Yeah, I guess my point is, I understand what's in the code, but from this commission standpoint, at least for myself, the less parking, the better, so we don't happen to build any extra, even though that's what you're allowed to. So, that's, that's the basis of my question as to not just building it to what code may be, but what do you, what do you need? Because you're adding a bunch and it doesn't necessarily have to go to code in our, at least in my opinion.
I guess I'd ask you, when you say that, why less parking, the better?
Because of hardscape in particular. You're adding more hardscape here. Not that we want to be able to use the parking stalls, but at same time, you know, that, so that it's not as car-centric as, it's not as car-centric. You know, we have a lot of developments come in with a certain number of stalls they add and, and in many cases, we've had, you know, asked the hard questions and say, do you really need that many parking stalls? It would save you money too from having to potentially build it out too, so that's why I'm asking the question. And other than code, I guess I'm not understanding or not hearing from you why you picked this number.
Well, the rental market, when this building was built, it probably rented to 16, I, you know, sorry I'll stereotype, but 16 widows that had, each had a car and they each parked it in the garage, or it was a family with one car. It was pretty common to have one car, you know, in 1960, you know, there's even a lot of single-family homes that were built with one stall garage. There's 16 two-bedroom apartments and it's right now, in my opinion, the market would be such that, you know, two cars, most families have two cars, you're, you know, you know, and, and three, we, you know, the occupancy rate for a two-bedroom is four people, you know, that we have to allow. So, it's possible you could have three, three or four drivers, you know, in an apartment like that. So, the goal for me was to get as many cars off of the street and on, you know, you know, on the park, having a place to park them. And so, we, when we laid it out, we came up with 13 and I, to be honest, it was kind of like we backed into the code. I didn't know that. It was just set the, set as many places as we could that would be reasonable and that's the way we came up with.
Commissioner Hobbs or Shear? I don't know whether...
Well, I guess I am curious about that, that last lot up in the northeast corner. I mean, I'm not convinced, looking at that, that, that even a small car can be able to get in there and get back out without a fair amount of difficulty. It's, as I can visualize it, I guess I'm just wondering if you just eliminated that whole side on that east side and eliminated that one spot, it'd make it easier for somebody to get in and out as well. So, I guess I'm just curious why, it seems like we're really trying to pound that last little stall in when maybe you don't need to.
Well, there was an alternate that we looked at, quite frankly, and there's a requirement for handicap parking or could be. This is not a handicap-accessible building and it would be possible to, you know, the first requirement is for van parking. We could stripe this location and leave the parking here, so the van, it could be marked as a handicap spot. Do you have any current handicap?
No.
But it would be available. It's a bit, it would work, it would give them the space, it'd be wide enough for them and also would get them to the building, but they, you know, just still have the problem of going down five steps, but that's an alternate that we had discussed and code-wise, that's something I'd want to talk to Kerry and probably the engineering department or building department about. So, it would keep it there, but it would allow handicap access, which would probably be a good thing.
Commissioner Shear?
Is it your expectation that, you know, based on the current residents, and I know that changes from time to time, but if you were to construct it as you've laid it out and based on the current residents and the cars that they own, that you'll start out with every slot full?
I don't know. I, I would assume that, you know, you'll have some guest parking and things like that that would come in. We wouldn't allow, we wouldn't allow car storage or anything like that. Every car has to be licensed and moved.
Right. But I guess I was just trying to get at what, you know, the demand of the current residents. How many cars are they regularly either parking on the street or parking, wanting parking?
Um, I'll be honest and tell you that it's, it's because of this problem with no parking, I haven't wanted to address it. We've been talking to the residents, telling them that we're trying to get a parking space, you know, for them and as many as we can.
Okay.
There have been renters that don't want to rent here because they'll come and say, hey, where am I going to put my daughter's car or my wife's car? We've only got one spot, so maybe the demographic that's there right now isn't going to be the same.
Okay.
Over time, within the next year, it's probably going to change. I mean, I, I know it's commendable to cut out hard surface, but people drive cars. We all drove to get here. You've got a wonderful lot outside and we're trying to create the best balance. Is eliminating a spot a super hardship for us? Well, probably not, but it, is it going to be a hardship for people that live and work here and go to work every day? Yep, it can be, so life's a balance and we try to do our best. In some ways, I mean, there's a hard surface issue, but there are rules in place to take care of that. We meet the watershed requirements when you have hard surface. We're actually, because of this lot, there's quite a few more, like I think it was 100 and some cubic feet of flood storage that is created because this lot is here as opposed to if it wasn't here. So, there's some unintended benefits, some, some things are probably negative in some people's eyes, but on balance, that's what we try to come up with here to talk to you about, so we can benefit the property and make Edina a good place to live, and I think that's what everybody here wants to do.
I'd have one more comment. Another unintended benefit, I think. I have attended a number of events at the cremation society in the last few months and in every case, the parking lot is very quickly full and we are parked up on both sides of this curve going all the way around, and I'm sure some of them are your residents whose cars are there, but then the rest, and it is a nightmare in terms of what goes on. So, if, if a number of those cars belong to your residents and they have a way to get them off the street, that is an unintended plus to the entire situation on that cul-de-sac.
Well, the truth is too, there's with all the apartments that are being built, you know, I have in my notes here, you know, a meeting where they were just talking about 160 units that was going to be right across on France. You know, it's another reason why having more cars off the street is going to make that whole area much, much safer and, and, you know, for, for drivers, pedestrians and everyone having more room, so, you know, and there, and I'll call out, there is a sidewalk on, on the south side all the way to that leads to France.
Andy, I believe I'm right, but didn't you have an agreement with the cremation society to use some of this parking during the winter and they, because of their use, now have declined to renew that agreement?
Well, that's why the first year we had the building, we didn't know about the problem, because the...
Shadow parking.
The, they were all, everyone was parking in the cremation society lot and when the caretaker told me, you know, of the parking ban and said, what are we, and asked me what we were going to do, I said, well, what did you do last year? And she said, well, we were all parking in the cremation society lot, but they got upset and told us that we can't do that anymore. You know, I, in my notes, I can tell you that I called and asked for a variance in front from someone with the city of Edina and I have his name, but I don't remember it. It's written down, but, you know, of course, he couldn't give it to me and I understood that. And then I've been talking to Kevin, who owns the cremation society quite a bit, and I even offered to plow that whole back section if that would solve the problem for him and he just said that I have a business to run and if there's one car there and it prevents one person from going, you know, into his chapel, it was, he couldn't do it. So, I understood and...
Commissioner Schroeder?
I was just going to comment, you talked about changing one of those spaces, 10 and 11-foot stalls to an accessible parking stall. You don't have the space in 10 and 11 feet to be able to do that. You can't get the parking space in the necessary aisle for that, so I just want to make certain that that's clear. It's not easily changeable and if you were to do it, you'd probably actually provide a park, an accessible parking space in the front, which is probably in that loop. But I want to go back to something you said about the nature of Hazelton and Linmar Lane. You said that it would be safer without cars. Is there, have there been accidents? I mean, I travel that often because I live in the neighborhood. I'm not aware that there have been accidents, so it's a little unfair to say that it'd be safer without cars and I actually contend that because of the cars being present, people actually drive more carefully and I don't know that getting cars off the street is going to make it safer.
In, just in my opinion, I'm sorry, I just feel like having cars off the street will be a better thing for everyone.
Commissioner Forrest?
I'm just going to throw this out there, because I'm curious. What were, what discouraged you from accessing that western side from the circular driveway? And I see that there's some architectural hardscape elements in the back, but I'm wondering, is there, did you explore looking at parking behind the building?
We didn't look at the rear of the building. This is a, kind of a picnic plaza area back here and there isn't enough depths to get behind the building. I mean, and we're encroaching again on more wheels. We tried to make it less of a, an encroachment or the least as possible. When we did look at going up to the front, the drive had to come in, I've got a poor pin for it, but right in this area, and it resulted in losing a couple spaces here and you still have a problem with maneuverability on these spaces up here. They selfed the back around and we didn't have the tail space. When I, when I talked about making this a handicap, it would mean we'd lose a space, by the way, in this, the van accessible is your, where you, you actually need an eight-foot stall for the van and an eight-feet next door, so you, they can open the van doors and use the lift, et cetera. So, that would take it from 13 down to 12 spaces and that would be the handicap spot and thus marked, and it could actually maybe be a little bit narrower there, we could shrink that up, but that would be the idea with the handicap. The rules say the handicap stall is supposed to be the closest to the building entrance, much as you have right here. Here, there, that'd be the closest way to get a handicap person to that entrance, which is right in the northwest corner of the building, if that was a commission's desire to approach it that way.
Wouldn't you by code have to have a ADA stall here?
Well, we haven't gone through the code.
I understand the building regardless, but I, you know, I, I forget the number percentage.
On a new structure, you would have to do that. On this, a kind of a retrofit, you know, I think we'd be happy to do it if that's the desire, but it's a, I think we're way under the rules for more than one, so one space would probably meet the requirement and if we had to do that, I think that'd probably be something we could work on.
The handicap, they have to go up, I think, five stairs and then they're at the middle of the first and the second floor.
Yeah, I realize the practicality of it, but I was more asking from literally the code standpoint is, in putting these in. Regardless of that, do you have to have one? That was my question.
And we recognize, a lot of times the handicap is for, and let's see, like my other half who just had her knee replaced and for, for a week, she had the handicap sticker. Well, she could park here and she could easily maneuver up the stairway, so there's more reasons than just someone in a wheelchair to have it, obviously. So, would there be a benefit and would it be used? Yeah, probably.
Yeah, there. Commissioner Shear?
Well, just in summary, from my perspective, I don't think it's ideal. I think there, you know, are issues with coverage, but I support the idea of getting some of these cars. I understand that if I were renting a unit there, I would not want to be juggling my car all the time. And I understand that in units of that size, you're probably more often than not going to have more than one vehicle. I also think that with the situation with the cremation society on many days where there are events there, it's, it will be better for the neighborhood if there are fewer cars that are permanently parking on the street. I would like to see more, the increase in the vegetation and some ways of doing whatever screening you can and that makes sense. That being said, I'm, it's not perfect, but I understand the rationale and I'm in support of it.
Any other questions for them? This is a public hearing, so we should probably do, do that before we take the comments. I do have one, maybe last question here, but, so on the, in the, I guess it'd be the west lot, in the northwest corner of that lot where you're taking down, I believe it's like a 14-inch maple, is there any way to configure that road so it doesn't do that? And I realize you're planning on putting an overstory back, but you already have one there today and I don't know how long it'll take to grow another one, but, you know, is there any maneuvering on that? And you, maybe you've looked at it already, but still, still ask the question. I appreciate you saved the one on the, on the east end of this.
Well, it's, it's close. We can take a look at it. When you bring these roadways out, you like to do it at a tangential? When you bring these roadways out, you like to do it at a tangential, engineer talk, I guess.
Yeah, that was my point. I know you're engineering pieces, but is there, you know, any fluff in there?
If we can move that and bend this slightly to avoid that tree, there isn't a lot of cut here, so we can, if we were cutting too much around the base, that tree wouldn't make it anyhow. Our proposal calls to put two-and-a-half-inch red maples back in. They're a fairly quick-growing tree.
But it's still 15 years.
Yeah, it's going to take a while to happen, and that's just what needs to happen with landscape. You have to give it a little bit of time. But we can look at that, and we now propose more landscape over here. I'll get my landscape architect to look at it, and just look at the placement of all these trees, I guess, subject to the planning department's approval, in whatever direction the planning commission gives them.
Okay. Just have one more question. We keep focusing on that west parking lot. If we look at the east parking lot, where we're essentially being asked to provide a variance that establishes a two-foot setback from the property line, why would we not go to the west property line and do a similar thing, and actually create a good functioning parking lot with a backup space on the easterly end by sliding those spaces closer to the, to the property line or to the, to the street? You have plenty of distance for car stacking, much more than you have on the east side, and you actually get properly-sized parking spaces with a proper backup stall with essentially the same condition we'd be granted on, granting on the east side.
Pull it out to the street.
Pull it out closer to the street.
You're, you're talking in this area, sliding it westerly?
What you essentially have is three extra feet in those last two spaces on the east side. You have 12 feet. You need to slide it another six feet in that direction, half of the distance that you have on setback. So, you have six feet of setback area, but we're, you're asking for two feet and one foot on the east side. You have, so, and you get a better functioning parking lot with a proper backup stall and all the parking stalls being the same size.
Well, I, that's a great idea as far as I'm concerned. Having been through more than one, and of course you have been, variance situation, we typically try to minimize the encroachments in our position where the more setback we can get and the closer we can be to compliance, the better. This may be one of those rare cases where, and your suggestion's probably a good one, or it is a good one. If we slid this even 10 feet closer to the street, we could change the turnaround tail and make some changes here that probably would benefit the property, but that's a call for the planning commission to make. We can do that. I'd be happy to if it was the wish of the planning commission.
Long as you can save the tree there.
That would definitely not save the tree.
Definitely, I don't know whether it was in there. Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. One last, and then we'll go to the public hearing. How's that?
Just had a question. A lot of asphalt surfaces, and the road that, the curved road, the entrance road that goes in front of the building, have you?
This one?
Yes. Are you going to resurface that, or is it going to remain the same surface?
We haven't, we haven't looked at that, quite frankly. It's in good structural condition, but it's showing its age.
It's concrete.
Yeah. So, we can't really seal coat it. A lot of times, a nice fresh coat of blacktop to engineer looks pretty good anyhow, because it looks new, like these, the folks at the Cremation Society, but with this concrete there, isn't a heck of a lot we can do with it.
Well, the reason I asked is just with this much surface that you have on this lot, if you were going to do something with that drive, you could put pavers on there, and then you've got a pervious surface, which is better for the environment. So, that's just something to keep in mind.
Okay, if you guys want to sit for maybe a minute. Since this is a public hearing, unfortunately, I didn't see anybody out there, but if anyone wants to come forward, now is your chance. Hearing none, seeing none, I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Does that have a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Carrie's? So, back, back to the commission here. You know, any other thoughts, comments? Heard a lot of stuff here. It just seems to me there's a lot of asphalt or concrete being put in here, so I don't know if there's a, maybe a best or better solution, but that's just the overall sense of it for me. Commissioner Forrest?
I agree with, with you and with Commissioner Shear as far as, it's not perfect. It would be nice if we had, if there were, was another alternative. It's, it is an odd-shaped lot. My remaining concerns are that extra curb cut on the curve, especially when you say that cars are frequently parked all along there, so visibility will have to be tops in your mind. Procedurally, if they were to redo this, would we then see it one more time before final approval of a variance? Because it's not a plan that's, it's, there's a lot of details to work out yet if they do change it.
I guess that would be up to you, if you'd like to see them revise it and come back, or you could condition it upon, you know, a specific number of the setback, shift that, that parking lot closer to the street. You could do it conditionally, or you could require them to come back.
Because this would not go to council, right? So, I, is there a real preference for it or not? Well, that's, that was kind of, that's kind of my thought as well. I mean, any other comments, or is there a motion out there?
So, I'm just looking at the landscape plan. So, is that impacting, maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing. If we push that parking lot to the, closer to the street, is that impacting your stormwater at all? Looks like it would cut into that.
Yeah, pushing the, I'll speak up and up to my, pushing the parking lot, it will result in approximately the same area. We won't have any problem with the stormwater treated. We can make that work there, but there is some catch base, and I know we can make it work design-wise and make the watershed.
But you'd be pushing it into the pond, the infiltration area that you're proposing? Would you have to replace that?
We could still do that, and it would work fine, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Olson, I think you could just take the northerly bay and shift it. You could leave the south portion of that bay the same as exists.
Doesn't matter where it's located.
Yeah, just to, just a comment, although I'm not sure of the number of stalls here, but I would certainly be in favor of something that works much better than, than not here.
I think you end up with the same number of stalls. You're just making an adjustment along the north side, sliding it over and creating a proper backup.
Right.
Space at the easterly end of that parking bay.
Commissioner Carr?
Is it appropriate to move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions and findings of the staff, with two additional conditions, as we've discussed this evening? One would be the addition of shrubs to screen the parking lots from the street view, and with some additional comments, and that is that, to the easterly side, because the setback is only one foot from the property line, they would have to work with the city engineers to develop a landscaping plan that may go into the right-of-way. And also, I would recommend that, again, whatever landscaping plan is adopted, obviously, we want to screen the parking lot from the road, but we want to make sure that the placement of the shrubs are also conducive to safety, and that they're placed with safety in mind. The second condition would be that on the northerly bay of the parking lot on the west side, that those northern spots, northern bay parking spots be moved closer to the street by at least one spot further to the street to allow for better backing and turnaround.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none?
Michael, don't you have any changes?
So, we've got a motion and seconded. No further comments. So, all those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner?
I'm just going to say, I'm just sad to see the, the only triangular swimming pool in Edina go away.
There's probably one more out there.
So, having said all that, I know it passed, but I hope you heard our comments on just trying to really make sure, only building what you need here from a, from a impervious surface area and, and go through that.
Yeah, it was a good discussion. I think Chairman, or Chair, Commissioner Schroeder, you had a good idea of sliding that forward. We generally don't come in asking for, like we said, we minimize. I think that's going to work great, so if you need an engineering job...
I don't think I've seen a job offer tendered up here before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, done with the, with that. So, next up is reports and recommendations, and it's an update to the 2015 work plan, which I believe is in your packet. And Carrie, if you could just maybe go through the, the main changes there, the proposed changes there, and, and any comments from the, the commission for that.
Certainly, as directed by the planning commission at your last meeting, I've revised the work plan. So, what it does is move the small area plan that we had scheduled for the Cahill and Seventieth, to push that out to 2016, 17, and in its place, do a small area plan or the density study for the Southdale area. And if this is acceptable to the planning commission, we would bring this to the city council as part of their work session that we are going to have with them on February 17th.
Any comments from folks? You know, along with this, we don't have a exact how we would do this yet, so if you have any, you know, suggestions or any pieces for that along the way, those are certainly welcome as well. You know, it's, I could see it being a kind of short-term process to get something in, and then also, you know, a longer-term process to, maybe it's not the extent of a true small area plan, but something like that to, right now, I know the city is, is working on a sewer capacity and a transportation plan. I don't know if those have started, but they're close to starting, so this would potentially go along with that, right?
That's correct, yeah. The, the timing is perfect to piggyback, because they really go hand-in-hand, the land use, looking at the transportation capacity, utility capacity. So, yeah, we would get that started right away. I might add too, as part of our work session with the council on the 17th, we can discuss some of the detail on how we might want to move forward combining those two, those two efforts.
Yeah, speaking of that, I won't be at that meeting on the 17th. I'll be out of town for that, so.
I will also be out of town that day.
So, falls to our secretary then to carry the flag.
I've got a suit, right? Okay.
We didn't necessarily plan it that way, but...
For purposes, we use the phrase "Southdale area" a lot. Do we have a definition of what that means?
Yeah, you know, I think it comes from, we called it the Greater Southdale Area Study back, yeah. So, I probably should include that, because it's not just Southdale, yeah.
It'd be nice to sort of define some boundaries.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and have a, have a description or a name that we could, yeah.
Yeah, it's generally between York and France, but not excluding the, the west side of France and the east side of York, so it's kind of the, the higher density uses.
Shoulder areas.
Yep, including those shoulder areas, and then from 62 down to the border on the, on the south, the south border.
I think it'd be good to have a definition of it. Yeah. The council's had a lot of discussions lately about wanting this and wanting, and there are areas that they seem particularly interested in, so we want to be sure we cover all of the requisite space.
And we can clearly articulate that to our, to our residents, to, to what we're speaking to.
Mr. Chair, I would just add that this area is identified, and I'll bring it up maybe one last time, as a potential area of change. It should actually be an area of potential change in the comprehensive plan. You're probably getting tired of that, but I'm not. So, I think as we look at it, there is, there is a boundary that's defined in the comprehensive plan that we should be looking at, and I think as, as the, as the city looks ahead to, to a 2018 comprehensive plan deadline, a submittal to the, to the metropolitan council, we should be looking at actually not carrying forward a number of areas that we said would be areas of potential change, and having them set for 10 years and done nothing with some of them, we should actually be trying to accomplish resolution of those areas of change in some capacity before we complete the next comprehensive plan. I think that this area that's identified, that's highlighted here as eventually the Greater Southdale area, would be a significant step forward in the comprehensive planning process, might actually demonstrate some of the processes that can be used in other areas that will have to be embodied in the comprehensive plan process. But importantly, because there is a significant potential for change in this area, to have some movement forward now, instead of waiting for the comprehensive plan to be completed is important. So, this, I think, is a really important first step. I have been talking with Chair Platter about how we do this, and depending upon how the council looks at this, we may want to bring some ideas back at our next commission meeting, just to share with the commission.
Yeah, certainly, I think, I think it's coming out of that meeting with council. You know, they, they may give some direction, but definitely either start the flesh out of that or the next steps also to identify. Commissioner Forrest?
I know with Valvee and Wooddale, part of the early process of, of the small area planning process was to identify exactly, that was, once we got in there, it, and the boundaries weren't exactly as they were in the old comprehensive plan when we decided what was going to be affected and what we wanted to address. I'm sure there'll be some of that here, but it does need closer identification prior to that, and I'm sure the council has their opinion. It's probably like any other research that you do, one big part of that is identifying further research needed, so it will be interesting to see what the, especially the engineering side of it, what they're coming up with, to be able to see that simultaneously, that they're getting some new information as well. So, it, I don't know, I could foresee it also being certain things needing to be addressed as priority items, and then deeper assignments along the way maybe coming up, but it's exciting to see that. I agree, it's exciting to see it's moved forward and look at this more closely.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to say, here's what we want. I think, I know that comp plan identifies changing, but that is a little vague after that, in my opinion. I don't think it's anyone's intention or not, but that's just how it ended up, and we've got many, many projects that are now potential there, and as anyone's driven around that area, you can see there are areas that will definitely have probably a better value as something else than what they are today. Any other, Commissioner Lee?
I felt that after the last city council discussion on that, there was a sense of urgency that they identified as well. In fact, there was a little bit of a reluctance to spend too much time waiting for a so-called small area plan for Southdale. So, I hope that we can find some way to actually craft that process, and I think what we were talking about was how to get the stakeholder involvement early on, because really, I think that's what we've been wrestling with. What do people want here?
Right.
So, rather than wait for the comp plan review, if we can get, jumpstart even that piece. And it appeared to me that it even felt that council would be elated if we could come back to them within the span of, I want to say, weeks or a month, you know, a very short timeframe, at least to have that process crafted. So, that work session will be real important. I think that we could start this part any day. I've always been feeling that as once, you know, once we have set our mind to these things, and obviously we've got the word from council now that, please, go ahead, move on it, put it on your work plan, that it's something we should...
Yeah, I think Commissioner Shear, you could definitely see something like that, and, you know, there's a, you know, there's, there's a short-term solution and a long-term solution, right? So, how do we, how do we address those quickly for the short term? Are there any other? Commissioner Carr?
Commissioner Olson also has a conflict on the 17th, so those, at least three of us that are not able to attend the work session with city council, is that something that could be rescheduled?
That one has been on their calendar for quite some time. That one has been on their calendar for quite some time. If we were to reschedule, we would likely be put out to June, July. I know that their work sessions are, are full.
You know, and I, I get your point, but from a, at least the Southdale thing, I think that needs to go in, and I'm hoping a couple other commissioners, like Commissioner Schroeder, will. I believe it's at five, right?
Five.
Do you know if it's at five or at six? Because I don't, I think we only have an hour, right, with them?
We are the only ones scheduled with them, so it, it could.
So I don't think so either. That's why I'm suggesting that if it's possible, normally we would not request another date, but it's an important.
I have to be in YZ at seven for a council meeting, so I could maybe.
Starts at five.
I could maybe do that. I was thinking it was at seven, or seven, or six.
And I know there's some other things on there, and, and in my mind, this is the, the one that's, probably has urgency to it. So I, I'm not sure what else to. Well.
That's, that's wasting everybody's time, in my opinion, but.
Planner Teague will be there.
Be my swan song.
And maybe it's, maybe it's the one I'm, Planner Teague, I believe you'll be there, right?
I will, yeah, the.
You know, the, the particular, this Southdale.
Yeah, if there's something that we wanna put together over the next week and a half, that we can present, you know, if we're, we could come up with an outline or something that we're thinking about, those beginning steps, I could certainly present that to them.
I just think, I don't, scheduling this out for that particular piece, I don't think works either. This isn't a great solution, but. We'll have, we'll have, I think we'll have many chances to, to, to bring it up again, but I think just to get something going, we, we need to get going on that. Commissioner Forrest.
What else is on the agenda for that work session?
It, it's a discussion about the 120-day rule and the concern that we have in regard to processing rezoning applications in a timely fashion. That's the, that's the, that's the primary topic.
And there is, what was the other, there's a third thing, I believe, on there?
Uh, just, just general discussion about zoning ordinances, anything that we wanted to discuss there, and then, and then this would be the third piece. And this isn't your regularly scheduled yearly work session with the Planning Commission. This is in addition, right.
Commissioner Forrest.
Is it possible, prior to that meeting, to that work session, to get any more clarity from the council as to what they most urgently would like to see as a work product, or what information they want us to be able to collect that would affect their needs best? I mean, I'm not, there's so much going on there. I know we've talked about density is, is a big one. My big concern is we're increasing density dramatically right now, but we aren't going to see the effect of that until those units are all built and the traffic patterns have been established. So if that, is that what, if you can get a really clear statement of what they're looking for, it'll help us move more quickly as well.
So, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we're looking at kind of how we're gonna begin the process and, and kind of the public engagement, like you've discussed here. That's the first, most important element to this. So maybe it's an outline of how we, how we plan to go about that public engagement. You know, somewhat similar to the first round of the Grand View, where we had a lot of public meetings and gathered input. There would certainly be more as we moved along, once we learned more about the transportation and, and some of the utility issues out there.
So you're suggesting we do 10 meetings in 20 days again?
Yeah, I don't know if, if, that's always a possibility. It was successful. It was busy.
Yeah, it was busy, but it, it got some stuff out there, definitely.
Well, my understanding was, the reason for that was because of the 7200 project. They're, they're definitely related, so I think the intent was to get, there was a 30-day extension for that. So this, this came up as a result of, of that discussion, that perhaps information could be brought back that would be useful coinciding with that timing. So I think that's like March 3rd or something, was that the day?
That is March 3rd, and certainly we're not gonna be able to, I think that project has kick-started this study. I don't, we're not gonna complete this study in a timely manner to have any impact on that project.
But we could have a process in place, at least, an understanding of what the process is. I, I think that was sort of my understanding. There wouldn't be a report or anything, and definitely no consultants or anything like that, but if we understood what the process would be, that actually would, might have some impact on that in 30 days when they have to.
Outline process.
Take a look at that. So here's my question, is there any point, do you see us at that work state, uh, work session needing to actually put something in front of the council then? Should we be working on something between now and that work session?
In terms of process, if I'm thinking? We could, we certainly could. You know, we can start with, we've got the template for the small area plan. It might be a.
And/or the Grand View early piece, too.
Yep.
Very, um, so I was confused, since we had been talking about the annual work plan, I thought that was the work session topic, but that is not the topic?
It's not, no.
Okay, and the topic is, again, just so I understand?
The development review process, 120-day, the 60-day, 120-day rule.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we went through the work plan last fall with the council, so.
Carrie, can you give a little summary of that? I mean, I, obviously, I think the more seasoned members understand that, but the, the 60-day, the 120-day, and, and what is the actual problem that we've been running up against? Where has it created problems for us as a planning commission and the city council government body?
Yep, um, state law requires that cities take action, we'll use rezoning as an example, because that's where we run into an issue, that the city takes action within 120 days of the date of a rezoning application. We have a two-step process. We have, at least in the eight years that I've been with the city, we have never completed a rezoning, both preliminary rezoning and final rezoning, within 120 days. The one exception is the, the Lennar project. Surprisingly, we were able to complete both preliminary and final within 120 days. So the way it usually plays out is after a preliminary rezoning, I, I ask the applicant to either waive that rule or extend it a certain amount of time. It's been working for us, but it could cause a problem if someone weren't willing to do that. You know, there's, as you know, as we go through these larger developments, there's always changes made along the way where delays happen. So there's some concerns there, and we wanted to have that discussion.
So back to the original comment about having a kind of draft outline, Carrie, if, if you could put something together or we feed some information to you on that for the meeting next week, and then you could send it out, hopefully in advance for any folks to have comments on it. Does that, does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Thanks for your flexibility. Any other comments on the work plan? I don't know if we, we don't have a particular motion on this, do we? Just, it's what's, moves along?
General agreement that this is what we'll put in front of the council on the 17th.
Okay. So, any, uh, next up corresponds petitions. I think the council update is in there as well as the attendance, and I think some people are still 100% of the case. Great. And our retiring members are even, I think, at 100%. Aren't they, or close to it for their, for their timing?
So far.
So far. Oh, one other thing, and just move on to chair and commission comments here. We are conducting interviews right now for the new members, three new members. That looks like it'll, at the earliest, happen the first meeting in March, so definitely want to ask our, our members to all attend the next meeting along the way. That'd certainly be appreciated. I believe there's 17 applications or so for the three spots, some, something in that range. So a lot of interest in the community for it, so that's a good thing. Uh, any, Chair, any other commission comments? I have a couple things after, if anyone has anything else. Yeah. Sure.
All right, well, obviously you received a copy of the draft plan in your packets, so formally, I'm supposed to take any feedback tonight, but I'm guessing that some of you probably have not finished your, or completed your review. But we can have a short discussion right now, any general comments? And then I'd like to, if you can continue, if you have additional comments, to email them to me up through Tuesday of next week. We will be meeting as a body, a small area planning team, on Wednesday, so I would like to get your comments ahead of that, so I can kind of take a look at that.
Does, should those go to, through Lindy, so that they get compiled centrally?
They could, or it doesn't really matter. I think that we were, we, you and I were responsible for sort of collecting it from our commission, and then probably packaging it in some form, or distilling it, or, yeah.
Sounds good. It'll all be part of the record in some manner, anyway. That's good.
Yeah, so I would say to you, just send it to Arlene or myself, either one. And so I don't know if anyone's taken a look at the document, if there has been any general feedback. I did get one comment back from Mike overall, but I thought that was.
Hard copy altered at all from the electronic copy we got earlier?
About a week ago, from Carrie. Okay, this is the same, okay. That should be the same.
Is, is this posted right now on the city's, so people can, anyone can comment on this, right?
This is the copy, yep, the same copy the public is now seeing as well. So our intent is to collect planning commission comments. Obviously, we're, we're getting public comments back. And again, our own committee is gonna be looking, still reviewing it along with you, so there's actually three parts to that review. Uh, that would be next Tuesday, so that is the eighth, the 17th, 17th.
The date we were all speaking of.
That's right.
Date, no one's here.
I'll take it earlier than that, just no later than that.
So once again, just thanks for all your hard work on this. This is quite amazing. A lot of information here and a lot of hard work went into this, and hopefully has, uses a guideline for, for other comments, other areas of town as well.
One of the things we wanted to be sure is that you find it useful. Obviously, this is the kind of thing that, and, and I know that Arlene and I have been stressing that among our planning team, is that this is a document that needs to be accessible and, and fairly easy to understand, so if we need to find the information as a planning commission, that we want to be able to, to get to that information. So if, if anything, kind of review it in, in terms of that usability factor.
I will say too, that we've gone through this as, as a team, in a group activity, kind of going through with, with rough editing attempts and things like that. Since, I mean, we've identified further tweaking that needs to be done in different areas as far as either format or expansion of, of, you know, greater descriptions, better accessibility to key information, things like that, and we're working on that as well. And we'd love your comments on those things as well, if any way you'd find it more useful. Also, there will be attached appendices to these, and such as the demographic and marketing information that supports the text in, in the document. So we don't have all of that together here yet, but this is the plan that would be the useful document, hopefully, and the other information would be supportive.
I do have one comment to it, and we may talk about this, but on, on page 29, for those of you following along, when you call out the, the heights on that ish, standard heights, and you have the stories and the, and the 48 feet, and one thing I'm concerned about is, is, is that something that can, that height realistically been, be built commercially for building techniques, that that actually works? And in my experience, that doesn't work. So I, I don't want to put something in there that, that is always gonna be a point of contention, because in actuality, you can't build it, or it's not feasible to build it to that. Well, for example, that four stories only allows 12 feet floor-to-floor. That rarely happens, maybe in residential, but commercial, many times it, it can occur, because if you've got certain heights of ceilings and other things in that building, you've got structure, you've got mechanical, electrical, it doesn't all fit in there. You know, that's, that's my experience as building buildings, that, that is not a realistic piece, so I, I'm not, I don't, I needed some discussion, but I just don't want to have another spot that, that gives somebody angst and heartburn to try and fit something that is not generally accepted building practices. I'm not pining for necessarily way-out-of-control heights, but something that's realistic with building heights.
But, but the word "and" I think is significant here, four stories and 48 feet? So, I mean, I don't know that this would, that I would assume that this approves four stories, and that a commercial developer would come in and, and say, ask for four stories, if what they need is something in excess of 48 feet.
Was it in our?
Yeah, this follows the current comprehensive plan, so that's where those numbers come with.
I completely understand that, and my comment applies to the current comp plan as well.
Absolutely. As an example, the Twin City Orthopedic is four stories, and I think it's 82 feet tall.
I, I think, Chair, if, if you look even at the first illustration on page 31, they show a storefront configuration, and clearly the first story is taller than 12 feet. It's probably more like 16 feet. So when you consider that the, the top of this building will have a roof or a parapet, you're actually squeezing the upper floors down, or you're not actually achieving the kind of relationship this building is showing in this illustration. So I don't know that Chair Platter and I would disagree with the four stories. I think we're really just saying, make sure that, if you're doing four stories, make sure that it's a well-designed four stories, and it may not be 48 feet at a maximum height.
That's exactly my point.
And it is exactly the issue we have with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, you know, a lot of retail, even in smaller areas, you might have 12-foot ceilings or, I'm not saying you'd want it here, but a lot of them have 20 feet floor-to-floor on that lower level. And then what do you do with the rest of the levels? That, does that mean you can only build a one-story building? I, I don't know if that's the intent, but that's, that's how it lines up for me. And we do have this, in my experience, have this conflict with our comp plan all the time for this. There's my.
Yeah, it, excellent, because we deal with that on every project that comes through. So maybe it's, we take the, the number out and just leave it at four stories. The zoning ordinance has a number on it, and if it exceeds that number, you're still at four stories. It's a variance rather than a comp plan amendment to go taller than 48 feet.
You know, I've rarely seen comp plans that have both, both of those in there. I mean, it's, it's really distinctive to Edine. In fact, I'm trying to go back through what YZ has it, but across the country, the ones I've dealt with, it's, it's a rare thing. Because recognizing that you're gonna have these types of pieces in there.
I think that the reason we want to be really sensitive to this, though, is because this area abuts a lot of R1 properties, so. And I totally agree with you on the whole concept.
I'm not saying that's not the case. I'm just, I'm just want to make sure we're clear.
I just wanted to make sure that people understand that, that we are aware, that people are concerned about that transition to the R1s, as well as the need to have realistic.
I'm not by any means questioning what I think you're saying here. I just want to make sure it's something that we can build and not, not become a, a sticking point. Maybe it is. I, I, I'm not, and maybe that is the case. I just think it's something we just need to review and make sure we're comfortable with it.
So while we're, while we're looking at that page, I just want to make note that the current comprehensive plan, where, in the areas where it's shown as three, the current plan is two. So this is an increase to what our current comprehensive plan says.
So where it says three, the brown three, up to three stories and 36 feet, current comp plan only allows two stories there.
Right.
But of course, this would be an amendment to the comp plan at that point, right?
That, it would require that, if, if this, in fact, is what we are gonna.
If it comes forth and we'd want it passed, it would become part of the comp plan.
Correct.
It would, and then we would need to correct the zoning to make the zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So, so I guess I would.
I'm not sure they all agree right now, anyway.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to point out the difference.
Yep, and, and so if anyone has any, I mean, this. And so, if anyone has any, I mean, this is a great one right here. If you have any thoughts on that, you know, right there, that particular issue, I'd be interested to hear about that tonight. Here, we've got an area where we're proposing to change our comp plan, and it's for greater height.
Well, my comment would be, you guys have went through this with the neighborhood and a lot of people, and a lot more information than I've had on it, so I'm also trusting that you guys have done your homework, and this is what has been accepted to your process to date. So I'll leave it at that for my comments on that.
It does make it more useful, though, to get that kind of comment, because if this is to be a usable document, it needs to be relevant to those that are going to be looking at it and interpreting it. So I think that's a really important thing to make sure is addressed clearly in here.
Commissioner Shroeder.
I have one other comment, and it kind of looks forward to implementation. When you read through this and you look at kind of the form of some of the content, it's suggestive of form-based codes. And in implementation steps, I think the translation of this to ordinances becomes important, because we don't really accommodate a form-based code model in our current ordinances. But a lot of this is kind of shaped around that. And so the translation of this as a guiding document that would essentially be accommodated in the comprehensive plan will necessitate some other change in our zoning ordinance to be able to properly implement it, I think. So I think that should be looked at under the implementation steps. It's absent in the list of things that are here, but how we deal with...
Good catch.
...this as an implementation, as a policy documented to zone, it becomes important.
Yeah, we certainly want this to be applicable. We don't want more questions to come out after it. Commissioner Carrie?
Just one other comment. I didn't see this in here, but I didn't see a reference to the living streets policy or the implementation plan that is going to be developed. And I think that's particularly important to mention in Chapter 5, under Goals and Policies, that whatever plan or design is adopted, that it's consistent with the guidelines and the policy. And that it may also be appropriate in the Land Use and Community Design Chapter as well, particularly on page 44, where you have general guidelines for the entire study area. You, again, may want to make reference to the living streets policy.
Yeah, and kind of, you know, make, hopefully, you're not duplicating what living streets would necessarily call out here, either.
I would reference it, that this, whatever is done, be consistent with that, because it is a neighborhood.
Commissioner Olson, were you, did you have a burning comment?
Okay, we'll just run through, again, how this is going to be implemented. This is just going to be kind of guidance, correct? And so if, does it get adopted by the city? And then, but did they adopt Grand View? Is that where I'm getting confused? They didn't?
No, that's not been adopted.
It has not been adopted, okay.
Yeah, the goal here is to get this adopted as part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so then it would be kind of an amendment to it.
Yeah, I think of it as almost a PUD, almost, for that area. I mean, that, you know, it's setting its, well, not exactly, but it's, sorry, maybe that's the wrong word, but it's setting the guidelines for that area for the comp plan.
Thoughts on that, Commissioner Olson? You might be familiar with other ways that reports like this have been used without having to be an amendment to a comp plan.
Right.
I would be interested in your feedback on that.
I guess I was just kind of confused, thinking that this was more just guidelines. So if, you know, somebody came forward with a development proposal in this area, we would use this as what we would recommend. So I guess we have to really look much more carefully to make sure where it conflicts with, and if it's going to be actually an amendment to the comp plan. So, okay.
Well, as was pointed out at our meeting, that some of it is regulatory, as far as building heights and things like that, by virtue of changing those things in the comp plan, styles and preferences for street frontage and stuff like that. It kind of depends on how emphatic we want to be on particular items, but generally, it's a guideline that we can use when we consider a project to say, you know what? You know what we want to see? Why aren't you doing it?
Okay. So, some of your recommendations are based on the consultants, and so it's, and with what the neighborhood and the resident, you know, once, so everyone's agreeing that you could go with a higher, you know, like we were saying, in Zone 3. So, I don't know, I lost my point, but I think so. I guess if there's support for this, then...
That is the assumption, you know, that if we are, especially some of these diagrams where we're showing literally is it, it's a land use map, so it is going to affect our zoning, so this would hold precedent over that.
So it has to go through all the public hearing process and all of that?
Okay.
Okay. And Grand View, that was just, that didn't go through that same process because...
It wasn't an amendment to the comprehensive plan, right? So you'll be asked at your next meeting to hold the public hearing and make recommendations for this to be an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Okay. That's why we really want to make sure this thing's right, that everybody, even, you know, especially us sitting up here as well, because we have to use the document, whatever you can identify for us to improve or tweak.
It becomes law.
This is the time, right?
Well, it's the guide to set the law, which is the zoning ordinance.
Yeah. It does.
All right, like I said, through Tuesday, if you find or identify other issues, please feel free to email either Arlene or myself, and we'll call us.
Actually, it might be nice, too, to, what do you think about having it go to Carrie, and he just forwards it on to us, so that he gets a chance to see all these things as well, because he may be able to clarify some of the matters.
He may be able to summarize it, too. I mean, that would make sense. Right.
Okay.
Thanks, again, thanks for that. Quite a document there. Just a couple items for housekeeping. We talked about orientation session for not only us, but the new members, and my thought was, assuming they're seated on the March 11th would be our first meeting, I'm wondering if the 25th would work for people. And my suggestion is we have, you know, maybe just an hour before our regular scheduled meeting, to have it either, you know, the mayor's chambers or something like that as to do that. We'd have to public, notice at a public meeting, because we would have a quorum there, but it would be more of a broad discussion, kind of a overview of what we do, and, you know, anything that, I'll put a agenda together and shoot it around to people, or at least talk about our next, one of our next meetings for that. So, does anyone have any comments? Would that work for most people? Assuming that would work for all of our new members, since they're new to it, so...
So you're proposing just that we have a planning commission meeting, and it would be the hour preceding...
Correct. Our meeting, the second meeting of March, which I believe is the 25th.
Do you feel that an hour is sufficient?
You, I'm open to suggestions.
Well, in some ways, I think that the time is, would go really quickly for, I think, some of the things that we might want to share. I was thinking that perhaps we could get some veteran members back to do some sort of tips on...
Tips and tricks.
How they, what they do before they prepare, how to prepare for a planning commission meeting, some things to be aware of. Perhaps, maybe it would be helpful to have some type of written document that they could be referred to prior to that, to read, so that maybe that was taken care of some time.
Well, I think you have an agenda, and, you know, point out the bylaws. Bylaws would be an important thing for them to go through prior to that also, and then bring up. I would look at it more, not necessarily a presentation, but you'd have to study some materials ahead of time, too, and bring questions versus a full presentation also. So maybe 5:30, hour and a half? I don't want to make it too long, either, because we could also have a very long meeting after that, and, you know, just as far as how people's attention to something, too.
I like the idea of probably 5:30, but I think ahead of that, if there was something we could try to get into everyone's hands before then, and maybe, like I said, it could be, maybe just to refer to some documents. I know I had promised to do that earlier, and still have some time, might still have some time to collate something together in the form of a...
Yeah, I think maybe that could be a discussion item at our first meeting, March 11th, and then what we want to discuss, and then what would be the required reading in advance.
Yep. That sounds good.
Does that work? Okay.
Would you like me to invite Roger to that for his little training, or do we see that as a separate?
Well, it, you know, even if, I don't know if he has to be there the whole time, but maybe there's more of a Roger session or piece of it. I don't know, what do folks think? Or is that too much at that point? Maybe it's too much at that point. I think we can cover with your help, you know, kind of the basics. And I think, I think that's what people are more asking about, the basics of it, you know, just procedural-wise, not necessarily on the exact legal-wise yet, although that's very important, but we want to set the baseline.
He'd probably be okay if I presented his. He's given us that packet, yeah.
I mean, the bylaws cover a huge amount of it, too. Commissioner Forrest.
About seven years ago or so, Roger gave us a document that went through a lot of the procedural things that we do, including this criteria and process for variances, that was really well done. It was concise, but it was well done. And I know League of Minnesota Cities has a similar thing on variances just on its own, but I really liked Roger's document. And if he still has something like that, that can be quickly updated for, you know, since post Kumanaka, that would be great, because I think that'd be something that's, you can just, if it was clear enough, you could just refer to it when you had an application in front of you, and read through his comment on each of those checklist items. And it was, I thought it was well done, and I think it'd be useful for everybody to be included.
Yeah, if you have any certain things, send it to Carrie, and he and I can connect on what to get on there. I think that's all I had. Anyone, anything else? Didn't realize it'd be 9 o'clock yet, but all good stuff. So having said that, are there any, anything else, or take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great. Thanks, everyone.